Council, Bill Baker, would you lead us in a pledge?
Yeah.
Senior Boy Scout leader, too.
Unless in uniform, hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right. Well, the first item on here is a presentation to one of our own, Mr. Whitaker. So Fred, if you'd come on up here and after one of our council members' suggestions, I think quite appropriately, if the council wants to come down and stand here with us and maybe get in the picture and shake hands with Mr. Whitaker, maybe we get the whole council down here.
That's a great idea.
And I'll read this and... Ah-ha! See, I do it again, Andrew. This is perfect. In recognition and appreciation for your courage and devotion to the great cause of freedom, whereas Corporal Fred M. Whitaker, Sr., was deployed to France in October 1944 with the 347th Infantry Regiment of the 87th Infantry Division, and whereas combat took him into France, Germany, Belgium, Luxembourg, Czechoslovakia, Subban, and whereas his significant decorations include the Bronze Star Medal, the Purple Heart Medal, the Combat Infantryman Badge, the Distinguished Unit Citation for Extraordinary Heroism in the Assault Crossing of the Rhine River, and the EAME Campaign Medal with three banner stars, whereas on October 8th, 2014, at Trinity Episcopal Church in Orange, Fred M. Whitaker was bestowed with the French Legion of Honor Medal by the Deputy Counsel General of France in Los Angeles, Mr. Fabrice Millen. And whereas the Legion of Honor was created by Napoleon in 1802 to acknowledge its services rendered to France by people of exceptional merit, and whereas this award testifies to President Francois Hollande's highest scheme for Fred Whitaker's merits and accomplishments, and in particular is a sign of France's infinite gratitude and appreciation for his personal and precious contribution to the United States' decisive role in the liberation of France during World War II, now therefore be it resolved, the city of Villa Park formally acknowledges your leadership and consistent devotion to our nation, and we wish you success in all your future endeavors, and we can't take you in.
Thanks, Fred.
If I may say a word. You can say all the words you like. In the last few days, there's been a lot of attention paid to the soldier who shot Osama bin Laden. And what struck me the most about that was the soldier, the Navy SEAL, was quick to dispel any thought that his role was that important. He talked about the tremendous contribution of every man of that SEAL team. He talked about the importance of the four helicopter pilots. If not for their, if not for their skill, that helicopter would have crashed with the land inside the compound. But the skill of the pilot made it possible to lower the plane so the men could get out and function at full force. I was struck with the fact that the unity of that team was so important. And war is like that. You must have, you must be a team. And so, in that sense, in that, in that feeling, I accept this proclamation, sharing the fact that others have earned this as well as I, and it is given in the understanding that many have served well and given all, and I give you some.
Thank you again. Next, do we have a report from the Villa Park Community Services Foundation? Oh, we have Rick.
Yes, Mayor Barnett, we do.
Welcome. A pleasure to have you back.
Good evening, Mayor Barnett, Mayor Pro Tem Fasenelli, and counsel. I'm Rich Olmer and happy to be here on behalf of the Villa Park Community Services Foundation. We have several exciting things to talk about this evening, and with Thanksgiving and Christmas approaching real fast, we ought to get started. December the 13th this year, a Saturday, Santa comes to Villa Park. His traditional vehicle, the Orange County Fire Authority fire engine will be carrying him, and he'll have lots of candy and goodies for good boys and girls, and photo opportunities for everybody. The street schedule where the stops will be for the fire engine this year are on the Villa Park website, which is www.villapark.org. And if that's wrong, Jill will correct me. Is that wrong, Jill?
On the foundation website.
Okay. The foundation website is vpcsfoundation, vpcsfoundation.org. And there you'll find also the forms and the routes, as well as the times, for the boat parade, because that's next day. On Sunday, December 14th, there's a boat parade. It's the 17th Annual Villa Park Dry Land Boat Parade, this year with a spectacular name called Parade of Holiday D apostrophe Lights. So Parade of Holiday Delights. See that website that I just mentioned? That's vpcsfoundation.org. And you'll have a chance, if you have a boat... Oh, by the way, the definition of a boat in the inland boat parade is anything that rolls. Anything that rolls. And you have 10 opportunities to win a trophy. Most original... I, go to the website, check it out, and get involved with the boat parade, as well as be ready for Santa on the Saturday before that. Now, I'd like to look back a little bit at the month of October where the Villa Park Community Services Foundation contributed to the quality of life here in a very unusual way. It was in October that we held a second Dog Adoption Day. Actually, it was a half a day on a Saturday. And that's all it took in time for 10 dogs to find permanent homes that day. That was pretty spectacular, because we had a lot of rescue groups, people from the Orange County Shelter, some very experienced people, which we're not. But 10 was the largest number of dogs adopted in any half-day event that anybody could remember. So it was pretty spectacular. We found out at that event that the previous year, we had had six dogs. In our first year attempting to have dogs adopted, we had six dogs adopted. So 16 in two years, which is just something to feel awfully good about. So join us, please, in feeling good about finding homes, permanent homes, for 16 dogs in just two events. And maybe next year, if you'd like to do something in the way of adopting a dog, we'd love to have you come out in October. Those of you who have dogs and having knocked on every door in Villa Park City twice, I can tell you that about half the people in Villa Park have dogs. And if you do, there's a dog walk, usually held in January or February. We've only had one, and last year we had a real good turnout for first year, but we'd love to have you keep an eye out for our communications and join us in January, February this year, for a dog walk. It was cool. A lot of neighbors met one another, didn't even know they walked the same routes, and agreed to meet at, you know, nine o'clock the next morning, kind of thing. So it was really fun. Recently, your foundation had a planning-oriented retreat. And in that retreat, we finalized a really strong 2015 budget, which I'd like to say has great emphasis on spending. And the reason I say that is it's in collaboration with city monies, the Women's League and Rotary, and the focused areas are primarily beautification. As you know, Mayor Barnett started a couple of years ago with the idea of brightening up our entrances and exits, the main ones to the city. And we've continued that, but it costs a lot of money. Each one of those costs tens of thousands of dollars, and the foundation wants to continue its effort, as it has from the beginning, joining the city and finding some monies with Michelle's help and the council's help to continue this beautification effort. That's also known as increasing property values, by the way. That's something Villa Park residents are very interested in, very interested. We also need to upgrade our equipment. You know, the pop-ups for the picnics and things like that and the Halloween Fest, things that we sponsor, the pop-ups are getting old and a little bit rickety, so we need to buy some new equipment. Also, next year, the picnic, which has always been something you buy tickets for, you won't have to buy tickets next year. The foundation will pick up the costs without any attempts at reimbursement through tickets. And we have a concert in the Villa Park, which Jill Cooli started a couple of years ago, and we had the Beatles, and we've had a couple of really spectacular events, and next year, I'm sure it's going to be even better. But we're going to upgrade that, and it'll be in the month of August. We'll let you know when that happens, when we fix a date and have our tribute band lined up. The other thing that the retreat focused on was a very new program for seniors in Villa Park. I don't have a lot to tell you about that tonight, because it's in its development stages. But I think the important thing about that for you to know is that we have 200 homes in Villa Park, more or less, from the 2010 census, where there's a single person alone, and it's oftentimes a female, about two out of three times. But there are 200 of those homes in Villa Park. We don't want to be intrusive. We just want to make it possible for people to talk to one another, maybe develop a telephone or an email relationship, and let each other know that they're doing fine. So it's a, it's a program in the stage, as I said, of development, but it'll come along, and please watch for communication from the foundation. And transitioning back to the Dog Adoption Day and the senior program for a quick second, putting them together, these ideas came from members of the board or members of our community. The July 4 re-institution of a parade, for example, this year, came from a relatively new person in Villa Park. She came to a foundation meeting and offered the idea, and the foundation sponsored that. So there are lots of things. Sometimes I ask a person, have they heard of the Villa Park Community Services Foundation? And they say, what foundation? They don't know what we do. And they've lived here quite a long time. So our goal next year will be to increase awareness, to be at these council meetings a little bit more often than we have been. And I guess what I would like to say here is we're in our last of 2014 membership drive, and we'd love to have you join if you're not a member. The minimum membership is $75, and we'll throw in a book for the history of Villa Park if you don't have one. So please contact somebody on the Villa Park Community Services Foundation or City Hall. They'll help you. Our meetings are held the second Monday of every month at 6:00 right here in City Hall. So that's the update from the Villa Park Community Services Foundation, and any questions from council?
I'd just like to thank you and say it's very nice to have you back. And for those of you that don't know, Rich, he was on council, he's donated and continues to donate an inordinate amount of time for the benefit of the city. And in regard to your comments about the signs, I believe there are presently signs under construction right now.
There are.
Santiago and Collins, and I think Meets in Santiago. I haven't seen them, but I understand they're going.
Well, having been in a budget session or two over the eight years I was on council, I can share with you that, something you already know, and that is, there's never enough money to do all the things that we would like to do as a city council, and neither is there enough in the foundation. But together, we can make some nice miracles, I think. So, thank you.
We may be losing some more of that tonight, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Rich.
A double report.
Good evening. Got to tag on to that. One of the trophies for the boat parade, the upcoming boat parade. And now for my yearly song. It's beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade. Everywhere you go, boats parked on the street for days, sheriffs looking the other way, ignoring the 72-hour parking law. It's beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade. Soon the boats will sail down the streets of Old VP, all happy as can be, with garland and tinsel strung from stem to stern. There will be parties and people along the route, all shouting along the way to town center where everyone goes, where everyone gets to play. It's beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade. Town center is all aglow. Entertainment for the night, vendors offering gifts just right, and food and fun for everyone you know. It's beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade. Grand marshal naming is here. It would be such a bummer not to see Rich and Bev Olmer as they light the Christmas tree. It's beginning to look a lot like the yacht parade here in Old VP. See you there.
All right. I'm almost scared to ask, is that the end of the foundation presentations?
Very good.
Is there one more? Okay, go ahead.
Not the foundation, but the Friends of the Library. I'm Bill McDonald, the president of the Friends of the Library, which has sponsored for 10 years now our 5K, 10K fund run, and which has been, I think, a very important, very spectacular success. It has helped us provide funds, additional support for the library. A lot of people have worked very hard on that, but there's someone, especially here tonight, that doesn't usually get recognized, whose organization does not usually get recognized for all that, all the burden we place on them when we have this race. Particularly two years ago, where there was really chaos because of very poor coordination. We had the race, and there were actually multiple athletic events at the school, at the high school. So traffic was just an absolute disaster. So I would ask Lieutenant Bob Gunzel to stand up, please. I love asking a lieutenant to stand up. Bob, I want to present you with this plaque, and I'll read it to you. The Friends of the Villa Park Library, Inc., recognize Lieutenant Bob Gunzel of the Orange County Sheriff's Department for finding rational, logical, and creative solutions for the Villa Park Union Bank Friends of the Villa Park Library 5K-10K Run benefiting the Villa Park Library, Saturday, June 22, 2013, and Saturday, June 21, 2014. We could not have done it without you and your crew.
Okay. Thank you, library. I guess it's time to hear from the Orange County Fire Authority.
I'm going to be singing as well. Takes a lot of guts to run into a burning building, but I don't know, I think it takes more to stand up here and sing in front of city council and do a great job. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council, city staff, members of the community. My name is Mike Schrader, Battalion Chief of the Orange County Fire Authority, here to share just a couple of things this evening. First, I wanted to share some great news. We recently sat our new fire chief, Jeff Bowman. He was our interim during, from September on to this point. And then, just a few days ago, we sat him as our permanent fire chief, which is a great, a great thing for us to move forward as an agency. So we're very excited about that, after a nationwide search. Next, I wanted to highlight our emergency services history call for the month. 29 calls for service within the city of Villa Park, pretty, pretty normal level. All EMS service calls, floods, automatic alarms, things of this nature, no fires reported. Lastly, I wanted to just highlight for council and citizens, the importance of having a working smoke alarm on every floor and every living space. My, my wife and I have two small boys, and we went around after our clocks changed two weeks ago and got the ladder out and put the new nine-volt and all our old smoke detectors. And it, it's a great reminder to folks, staff and council, to do the same. National Fire Protection Association did a study, and they said that you reduce your risk over half by dying in a fire by just having a working smoke alarm. You further reduce your risk by, once that smoke alarm goes off, you leave your home and never return until we say it's okay. As a former fire investigator, I've been on multiple fatality fires that were 100% preventable had people just done those simple two things. So as we prepare to move into our home fire season, so to speak, with cooking and heating and electrical, it's very important to test your smoke alarms monthly, replace those batteries, and you can even go onto our website, www.ocfa.org, and we can get you some smoke alarms if you're unable to do that. So open any questions from council?
We also have, we also have smoke alarms that were provided to us, I think, from the fire authority also. And the Rotary will come to your home and install them for you. So if you know anybody who needs a smoke alarm, if they can't come down, if they can't put them on, they will actually come down here, pick them up, and make an appointment with you and put them in to service that the Rotary does provide.
Perfect.
And you don't have to pay for the smoke alarm.
I believe those are 10-year battery life alarms.
Right, even better. The ones, I've, I've got eight in my house. I'm a fireman, having your home burned down when you're a firefighter is not cool. So I have eight in my house, and they're all old nine-volts. So if you can get the tenure, they're, they're much better. Now Lieutenant Gunzel and I are going to sing a duet.
Thanks for the offer, but I'm going to, I'm going to pass on, I'm going to pass on that one.
And now we have the Sheriff's Department update.
Okay. For the month of October, Part I Crimes, a little disappointed that we have, for the first time this year, cracked the double-digit mark. We had 10 Part I crimes for October. For detail on that one, the first one, if you follow on your list, the attempt, well, we had as a temp bank robbery over in the shopping center here, was not a successful attempt, but it did create quite the stir here. And then we had four residential burglaries, kitchen window broken and residents ransacked. We had another one, a window smashed with the, with the house ransacked. The third one, multiple kitchen appliances. That one was a house under construction. There was no sign of forced entry, so what we think happened is there was a key left for contractors, and someone knew where that key was. They came in and took nothing but appliances and put the key back. In fact, there was no sign of forced entry on that one at all. And then the, the fourth one, suspect gained entry through an unsecured window or a door. And we lost one, that was an iPad, or excuse me, iPod. Again, lock your doors and set your alarms. We had a vehicle burglary from the high school, where someone had taken a set of keys from the locker room and went to the parking lot and took something out of a car. Two grand thefts. One was a trailer off of Dodson Way, and that trailer was subsequently recovered in the city. And then the trailer theft up on Rose Now Circle. One petty theft on Santiago, and then one act of vandalism, where someone threw a pumpkin out a car. So overall, the trend, the trends are still down. We're at 61 Part I crimes for the year, too much for my liking, but we finished last year, 2013, at 102. So hopefully, we keep going the way we are and finish lower than last year. I have a couple of things I want to talk about, unless somebody had questions about.
I have a question. Did you say that the trailer that was stolen on Dodson was found in the city?
Yes. It was. So on the stats, the stats, that would, that would actually double stat. They would have a loss and then a recovery stolen. So we counted it as one, DOJ stats wants two, so we just count it as one, one incident.
You didn't happen to find my trailer there, did you?
The one on Rose Now, we did not find.
I was the other trailer, so.
Yeah, no, we did not find that one. I want to talk about, and just in the context of crime stats and crime data, the effects of Prop 47, if you allow me just one minute. Actually, the day after the election, our field training bureau came up with a training bulletin showing the effects of Prop 47. And I'll go over some of the things that are going to be affected, all the different crimes that are under Prop 47. Insufficient funds, forgery, petty thefts, receiving stolen property, all drug possessions that are a personal use, and then they added a shoplifting statute. Basically, what all these things did, in a legal sense, there was a lot of crimes that were considered wobblers, and meaning it could be a felony or a misdemeanor. In that sense, it gave the DA a lot of leeway on, on charging and jail time and things like that. And also gave, for, in the case of drug crimes, gave our investigators a lot of leeway. You know, working informants and things like that, with the threat of going to jail or giving us information on, you know, where information, where drugs are coming from. So Prop 47, officially what it does is takes away the wobblers. So all those things become misdemeanors. What, what the problem is, what didn't stay in the voter guide, that most people don't read, that in order for a law enforcement officer to effect an arrest on a misdemeanor has to be in his presence, his or her presence. So if one of these crimes didn't occur in my presence, I can't make a legal arrest unless we have someone sign a private person's arrest form, which means a victim of a crime, say, for instance, shoplifting, someone goes into one of the stores here at Town Center, and unless it's over $950 a loss, then it's a misdemeanor crime. Even if we catch them outside and they have it in their possession, what would normally be possession of stolen property, and we go to prison or jail for that, now it's a misdemeanor. And furthermore, we have to have the victim, the shop owner, sign a private person's arrest for him, making them the victim of the crime, and, you know, we have to go to court testifying that they're the victim. So anyway, it's created a lot of things on drug crimes, everything. Heroin, which was a serious felony before, is a misdemeanor now. Methamphetamine, anything personal use is a misdemeanor. So it will affect the, the crime stats, not so much the drug things, and thank God, the residential burglaries are still felonies. But it will affect, you know, the petty thefts and all the bank crimes, the forgeries and things like that. I just wanted to bring you guys up to speed on what we're facing, if something happens, why deputies aren't taking action on some things. A lot of times, we can't. So just wanted to make sure I covered that before. And this is in effect right now. The last thing I'll say about Prop 47 is there's a possibility of up to 10,000 state prison inmates are going to be appealing their cases, which means they could be coming back out on the street. So if they were convicted under any of these crimes, that are now misdemeanors. So any questions for me about that?
No, no questions, but I would just make a comment. I'm sure many people in Villa Park read the register, and it was reported, you know, Villa Park, from our standpoint, we outright rejected it, one of the highest percentages of any city in, in the state, quite frankly. And I think that's just because we recognize that this is not a good thing for the people. But I just think it's interesting that cities that don't tolerate crime and actually have less crime are the ones that were more likely to reject Prop 47, and those cities that have higher incidences of crime and even criminals living in it were more apt to actually approve it. So I thought that was an interesting perspective. Thank you for the report, as sad as it is.
I think you'll see, when the new council's seated, I think you'll see a motion for a, for a Crime Prevention Committee to be established. So that's for anybody that's sitting out here in frustration, I'm not sure that'll solve all your problems, but I do think you're going to see a Crime Prevention Committee formed.
I'd be happy to participate in that.
Yeah, you can serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a Neighborhood Watch update representative? Mary?
Yes, we do. Mary Silzell, 18202 Montana Circle. My husband assists me in this, but he is grandparenting tonight, so he's not here for the report. The revitalization of our Neighborhood Watch program is proceeding successfully. We now have more than 70 block captains participating in an information network, which advises of law enforcement activity or incidents in the city. Block captains then share information with their neighbors, asking nearby residents to directly notify the Orange County Sheriff's Department of any suspicious activity observed or in any area of recent activity. All residents are urged to be alert to questionable situations, persons or vehicles, and to contact OCSD directly at the 714-647-7000 number to request investigation by law enforcement officials. Those who have private security systems are asked to check their systems and immediately notify the Sheriff's Department of anything that seems out of line on their cameras. To increase safety and security in our community, there will be a Home Safety Technology Fair here at City Hall on January 7th at 7:00 PM, and all residents will be invited to attend with the understanding, there is no obligation. There will be representatives of various security systems here to demonstrate and explain the systems and the equipment available to increase home security, such as interior and exterior camera systems, computer monitors, alarm systems, and so forth. The wide array of options is confusing to people, and this event is designed simply to clarify what is involved with those various solutions. Home systems can be installed and operated independently of city or law enforcement registration, assuring privacy while generating information that can be volunteered by the homeowners to law enforcement officials when appropriate. Questions about the fair can be directed to Jared here at City Hall or to Wayne and myself. We are asking any residents who have not done so, who are willing... who are willing to serve as block captains, to step forward and contact us. What will happen then is they will be added to the email communication link, which instantly transmits alerts about crime activity or situations via email to the block captains. And Jared and, and council members have been good about notifying us so that we can get that information and follow up promptly. There is no specific organization needed for Neighborhood Watch, and there is no specific format. We're emphasizing to the residents that the involvement can be as minimal or comprehensive as the neighbors and its residents choose to, to elect. As the sheriff just pointed out to us, the Orange County Sheriff's Department's statistics indicate that the level of crime in the city is actually less in twenty fourteen than in twenty thirteen. But the network of Neighborhood Watch is creating an increased level of awareness, which is of great benefit to our law enforcement. The release by the state of California of a large number of nonviolent criminals from prisons and jails has increased the potential for crime. The evolution to regional rather than neighborhood schools and increased traffic through our city from development to the east has made our hidden jewel a little less hidden. Residents are asked to be alert at all times and to assist the Orange County Sheriff's Department deputies by promptly reporting any activity of concern. We are asking them to call sooner rather than later, to be safe rather than sorry. We also urge them and remind them that residents are never to take confrontation into their own hands. Our deputies do that very safely and expertly, and we ask that all residents rely on them. Another effort we are making is to make the citizens aware that they can check the sheriff's blotter online at any time they detect helicopter activity or see law enforcement cars or activity in their neighborhoods and keep updated. We're also advising them that they can check the Megan's Law website to be aware of any potential threats that have been released into our community or their neighborhoods. We're very pleased with the success and the response of the community, and I think we're back to having a very effective Neighborhood Watch program again in Villa Park. Do you have any questions?
I have a, a comment. You indicated that the residents should call Jared at City Hall regarding this electronic security seminar. It was my understanding at the last council meeting that we made sure that the city is not involved in any of the selling of any private security equipment or endorsing, because the Neighborhood Watch program is separate from the city. It's actually a voluntary program. So, I'm not understanding why they would be calling. What, what is your role in this particular area?
That's a great question. We're just providing the space. They'll use, this council chair is here, and I believe Mr. Silzel's reaching out to a number of security companies and consultants to come on down and basically have a fair and just let them advertise their services that they offer.
Right. So, if they're contacting you, which is, I think, is what you just said, that they're going to contact you, the only thing you can say is where it's going to be and what time it is?
Yes.
Because I want to make sure that we don't endorse any particular item of security.
And thus, of course, Neighborhood Watch is concerned too, that the agents and representatives understand that this is just purely an informational session for our residents. There is no obligation on anyone's part. There's no preferential status for anyone who may be representing safety and security equipment.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. When is this? Was it January seventh at seven PM here?
January seventh, at seven o'clock PM here in City Hall.
January seventh?
Yes.
Thanks.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I am in agreement with Deanna Fasenelli about, you know, the city not advocating for any one particular provider over another. I would like to see us though put out on the E Network, you know, a notice about this, because I do think it's important for people to have an opportunity, to have them all together and do a nice comparison. I, I would like to really thank Mary and Wayne Silzel for what they have done with revitalizing our Neighborhood Watch program, because it had atrophied over the years, because too much, too much city involvement. Because this is all about the citizens watching out for each other, watching out for themselves, and taking individual responsibility. And we do need to have, though, a good citizen leader to do that, and you and Wayne have done an amazing job. I was extremely disappointed last month when there was a statement made from this dais, basically disparaging the Neighborhood Watch program. I feel as a council and as leaders that we should actually be encouraging people to get involved with this Neighborhood Watch program, especially at this time of the year. And I'd like to make one suggestion, and it really came to my mind when Mr. Almer was talking about the dog walk. We have dog walk, people are out walking their dogs at all times of the day or night. It might be a wonderful idea to have a Neighborhood Watch or sheriff's representation down at the dog walk when it occurs and educate those dog walkers on what they can do to keep an eye out. Really, it's the, it's the little things. We see it. There's a car parked there. We know it doesn't belong there. And, but we let it go and drive on about our business, even though those little, that little antenna went up, when it's such a simple thing to just make a phone call. Call the sheriff. And, and the way I understand it, it, it can be a positive interaction between the sheriff, if it's somebody that really does belong there, no harm, no foul. But, but we really do need to be on our toes. And we need to be aware, and we need to be watching out for one another, and we need leaders like you. So, I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then suggest that maybe you get with Mr., get with the foundation and do a little cross pollinate, pollinization, if you will.
We'll do that.
But thank you so much for providing us with that report. You've really done a great job.
Thank you. And along that line, we have had a couple of times when residents have been walking with their dogs and have seen something, someone that doesn't belong or a vehicle that doesn't belong, and they've just snapped a photo with their cellphone, just to have it with them. And in one case, it was called into the Sheriff's Department and was beneficial to them. So, we're just asking people to just plain be good neighbors to each other without making a big deal of it.
Mayor, I do have one more question for you. Does the, you're now receiving the crime reports as we do, is that correct?
No, we don't. We would like to, but we don't.
I thought you were getting the announcements as the crimes occurred, no?
No, Jared has relayed them to us, and Councilwoman Polly has relayed them to us.
Okay. I mean, that's basically the way I get them, is I get them relayed from, from Jared. And the reason I asked is because, you know, I know that, that getting those reports constantly as they come out has a real impact on me, because I see them, and it's like, oh, my gosh, not again, not again, not again. And so, I'm really happy to see that seventy some odd, it was my perception, that seventy some odd people are now getting them, because I think that's going to have an effect. And I'm just wondering if it makes sense to put it out on the E Network as they occur, so even more people are aware of it. Because the more people are aware of what's going on in this community, the better off I think the community's going to be. So, I don't know if we can do that, if it makes sense, but it's something to think about.
Something to definitely consider.
So.
If the more information we can get, all we're doing is just serving as a conduit. Receive the information and get it out to people. And then, if we hear a follow-up, get the information out to them. So, the more people can get information to us, the more helpful we can be. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Next is oral communication. This is where any other members of the community can appear and be heard on a matter that's not already on the agenda. And to do that, you approach the podium and give us your name and address. Tell us what you want to talk about, and we'll allocate five minutes. However, however, before we start that, I think maybe I have a way to, to kind of streamline this meeting and maybe avoid some inconvenience and delay for people. You know, for those that don't mind, how many, if I could have a show of hands, how many people are here out of concern with potential rehabilitation facilities in the city? I kind of figured that. Okay. With that in mind, and I'm going to, you're all free to come up and, you know, speak, at least as long as we don't just end up with a huge mass of, you know, duplications and take up the whole evening. You're free to come up and speak. However, before you do that, I would like to ask our city council, excuse me, to address that so that you have some idea where we stand on this and what our options are. I could tell you that I don't think this has been researched at this point as much as we'd like to, to have it. But we do have some idea what's going on, and I'd like to have our council share that with you. And when she's done, then if you want to be heard on it, go ahead and come on up and we'll, we'll entertain that. But it may help some of you get home and, and see where we're at. So, with that going, Megan, can you give us a little briefing on what's going on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, this, just to, before we start on that, this is not an agendized item. And so, that means that under what's called the Brown Act, the city council can't actually engage in an extensive debate over this issue or take any action on it tonight. They're sort of able to receive their comments when matters aren't agendized and direct staff to take action, to research items or to ask further questions. But there's very, it's a very limited universe of the things that they can do tonight. The second thing is that, my understanding is that staff is sort of currently intaking a lot of information on the sober living facility that's at that issue. And so, there isn't necessarily definitive answers on that particular issue, because they're still sort of investigating. With that said, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal last year recently found in a case involving the city of Newport Beach that a facially neutral ordinance, so that means that it didn't distinguish between sober living facilities and other group homes. It, it tried to treat all group homes the same. But that ordinance resulted in regulating sober living facilities and other group, living arrangements in a way that violated federal anti-discrimination and fair housing laws, because recovering alcoholics and drug addicts are considered disabled under federal law. What that, so in that case, the court found evidence suggesting that the primary purpose of the ordinance, even though it was facially neutral, was to discriminate against sober living facilities. What that effectively means for cities are that cities are prohibited from taking any actions that discriminate against or have a discriminatory impact upon sober living facility residents. The city of Newport Beach actually sought United States Supreme Court review on that case, and a couple of weeks ago, the Supreme Court denied that request, which means that the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal decision is, is the little state of the law as it stands today. What that means for what the city should, should sort of avoid doing in trying to regulate sober living facilities is distinguishing between sober living facilities and other group homes. So, for example, prohibiting a sober living facility in a residential zone where other group homes are allowed would have, would likely have a discriminatory impact. Requiring a conditional use permit when other group homes don't, aren't required to have conditional use permits would be the same issue. It would likely have a discriminatory impact. Some cities have tried sort of distance requirements, requiring that sober living facilities have to be at least so many feet away from another sober living facility. If, if that is not also applied to other group homes, they would have the same concern. What the city can do is enforce its residential zoning requirements equally against all residences. So, if a sober living facility is not code compliant, the city can use the full force of its municipal code and police power and all of the remedies that are permitted under the municipal code to enforce that against that sober living facility if it's not compliant with the currently existing code. One other sort of note, and this is where the law can start to become very technical. There are sober living facilities, there are community care facilities, and there are drug and alcohol recovery and treatment facilities. The latter two are govern, statutorily created creatures. They're governed by state law, and they have slightly different regulations than sober living facilities. The technical differences can probably be boiled down to sober living facilities don't provide medical treatment on-site, whereas a drug and recovery treatment facility may provide, for example, detox. So, those are distinctions. Sober living facilities, as a result, because they don't provide those on-site treatments, don't have state licensing requirements, whereas drug and alcohol treatment facilities do have state licensing requirements. So, that's sort of a brief summary of where we stand today. And again, we don't have all the facts about the sober living facility that may be at issue, but that's sort of the general.
Megan, I don't know if you can address this or not, but, you know, just so that not only have they been briefed on the legal issues, but obviously, I suspect most of them are concerned about specifically, what are we dealing with now? They've, some probably heard rumors. Would it be appropriate to provide a very, very brief synopsis of what we understand is occurring now, so that they have some idea of what, what we're dealing with?
Jared knows more facts about that, so he may be able.
If that's appropriate, I suspect they'd probably like to hear what, what we're dealing with right at the moment, in addition to whatever we may try and do in the future to.
Sure. With regard to the sober living facility in question, I spoke with the executive director this afternoon. Haven't confirmed any of the facts, but spoke with her. I was told, I'm reading my, my notes here, that, that the residents are not there during the day. They have a self-imposed curfew of ten PM. No training or treatment is conducted on-site. The homeowner actually homes, owns several homes in the community, it was mentioned, as well as other several community care facilities where treatment occurs. The reason we see no cars on the property is because, again, I am told, cars are not allowed to be had by the, the residents and that they provide transportation. Told it's a women's only facility. I'm told it's a non-smoking facility, which may help to calm some nerves and other associated impacts. I'm told there are four residents there at the moment. They have the capability to expand up to six, and if there's a seventh on-site, it's because there's an on-site manager. Well, there's an on-site manager twenty-four seven at the property. Most of the women are professionals. It's not an insurance court-regulated sober living facility. It's more go on your own graces. It's, it's pretty costly, from what I'm told. So, we see a lot of professionals, doctors, lawyers, professors, et cetera, those who want to remain private. And, and it's my understanding that's why they chose Villa Park, because it is, you know, a secluded neighborhood, essentially. Each person stays for one month, no longer, and then they're transitioned elsewhere. Again, I'd just like to stress that. This is what I'm told. I haven't verified it at the moment. I'm looking at all sources and resources possible, and, and as soon as I get some facts and some information, you know, I definitely want to educate the residents in, in the neighborhood, just to try to ease everybody's worries and fears about it.
Megan, can I ask a question of you? Can we regulate not having any group homes in the city, so therefore, we don't discriminate between a nursing facility versus a sobriety facility? It's an extreme, I understand, but is that possible?
The, the law on community care facilities and drug and rehab facilities is that, under the law, they are treated as a single housekeeping unit. So, they're not even treated as a quote-unquote "group home." That was the, effectively, the problem in the Newport Beach case, was that they tried to make the definition of single housekeeping unit such that it would exclude certain group homes, specifically sober living homes, but not exclude single family residences. And so, as a practical matter, it's, it's a tricky proposition, because of both the state law element and because, as like in the Newport Beach case, it was a facially neutral law that intended to effectively eliminate group homes, but had the consequence of, intended consequence of eliminating sober living facilities.
Megan, you're going to have to speak up a little bit, I think.
Sorry. The, the consequence of the facially neutral law was to eliminate sober living facilities, even though on its face, it didn't intend to do that. And at the end of the day, the court saw that as discriminatory intent to the sober living facility residents. So, it's, it's a tricky thing to, across the board, eliminate it because of the state law requirements on community care facilities and treatment facilities, and because of this sort of issue of a single housekeeping unit.
How about from the side of having to get a business permit, looking at it at a different angle, that we would prohibit?
That would.
Counseling or, or any sort of a room and board, because they do have a business permit here.
Right.
And, I mean, they did it right. They, there's a lot of people who don't have business permits.
Right.
If they didn't do that, we wouldn't even know their name today.
That's something we can look at. My initial instinct, though, is that it would be treating a community, a sober living facility differently than other facilities if we require them to get a different kind of permit than just a business license, which everyone's required to get. of permit than just a business license, which everyone's required to get that operates a business. And so that may run afoul of the issues of discrimination and discriminatory treatment.
But we can look into that, because that's something we haven't-
We can look into that.
Right now, that hasn't anywhere been used by any city at, at this point that we know of.
Yeah, we've been looking at it really from a land use perspective, so we can look at it from a, a business regulatory perspective and see if that, that's a possibility.
Megan, I'd brought that up with you earlier before the meeting, but additionally, I wanted to find out about, because of Villa Park, the nature of Villa Park, 2.1 square miles, four schools, are there any rules, and I know you might not have had a chance to look it up, but that would prohibit them to, from being within a certain parameter of school facilities?
That's a good question. I am not aware of any rule that would have a distance requirement from schools. Again, if our code were to regulate that, it would have to regulate all homes in the same way. So that may be where we would run into some issues, but also something that we should, we should research to get a certain answer on it.
I think so. Well, then, can we direct, we can direct staff to verify the information that was provided. Certainly someone who tells us that they have multiple homes in, in the city is a concern to us, to make sure that we don't have multiple homes popping up with these types of units. They're certainly making quite a bit of money on it, because that home was sold for a million five.
Yeah.
So I would like to direct staff to make sure you verify everything that's been provided to us and have a follow-up with us on the legal side of it, please.
Definitely.
So there's plenty of information. How many types of similar homes are there in town that you're aware of at this time?
This is the only sober living facility that I'm aware of. I was on the community care licensing division when we first found out about this. Naturally, that's where I, I go to find care facilities. There were eight assisted living for the elderly cares, and then one adult facility, similar for 18 to 59-year-olds, so nine in the community, that at least are licensed through the state. But facilities of this nature, it's silly. It's, it's crazy, in fact, where they, they're not licensed by anyone, essentially. The state is pretty clear in all the, the research, that I've done at least, that local governments are to treat these homes identically to a single-family home.
If I may. This is my last council meeting, so I won't be here as you read your way through this. We've dealt with this issue somewhat before. Never, never a sober living facility. But, you know, when I first got on the council, we only had five group homes, if you will, and most of them were, you know, senior care, you know, facilities, which is a very different animal than something that's providing rehabilitation. We've gone from five to eight, now a ninth one, right? In really a pretty short period of time, and that's a concern. One thing I would suggest to the council is to pursue working with ACCOC and these other cities who are experiencing similar concerns to tackle this particular issue. I think that since most of what you're talking about has to do with state legislation, that perhaps they need to work together to come up with some recommended legislative fixes that would provide relief, relief for family-based communities like our own. One of those might have to do with distance to school, with, with, within a school zone. So those are things I think that this council needs to pursue. I think it's gotten, Villa Park has become more attractive for these sorts of facilities because of the size of our lots, the size of their homes, the fact that they can make good money. And I think we need to, we need to really get aggressive with how we deal with it. The next thing you know, it's going to be 16 such facilities in our community.
You might want to put a call in to the listing and the selling agent also. They have a tremendous amount of information. And one of them is familiar with the city of Villa Park, so I think they'll be cooperative.
Is that it? Okay. Well, perhaps in your next position, Councilor Polley, you can, at a state level, you can fix this issue.
Lovely.
That said, I guess we can start the parade up here. Anyone would like to be heard on this issue, come on up and give us your name and address and, and speak away, assuming that didn't answer all the questions.
Hi, my name is Mort Israel. Live on Patricia Drive, been a resident of Villa Park for 27 years. And I'm glad to see the council taking this seriously, because I'll tell you one thing for sure. If this particular facility is allowed to stay, her four other houses will be similarly used and, and for the same purpose. Like you had mentioned, this is a very lucrative enterprise, and if we just sit back and say, well gee, there's nothing we can do in state law, this, that, and the other thing. I mean, I know that we can't discriminate against sober, these sober housing or sober homes, whatever you want to call them, or multiple group homes, but maybe there can now. There's got to be some way to deal with this that doesn't proliferate. Our hidden jewel is not going to be a hidden jewel anymore. It's going to be a tarnished bobble worth nothing. So you can put up these wonderful things at the beginning, you know, the entrance to Villa Park to increase house values, but when you allow these things to proliferate, house values are going to drop. And that's, you know, I don't think anybody wants to see that happen. So it's great, maybe Patricia Drive is sort of the, I don't know, the east end of Villa Park, the south end, whatever. We're not high up on the hill. But I want everybody here, you know, to pay attention to the fact that if this was occurring across your street, you would not be happy. And the fact that we have large homes that had sold for 1.4 or 1.5 million is really of little consolation. So we need to be aggressive. I know I was referred to the article in the Orange County Register, the Costa Mesa's dealing with this, but to sit and be timid in the face of what's happening, you should see this woman's home, the executive director. She lives in Newport Beach in a 10, 12,000 square foot home. She's not worried about somebody putting one of these facilities across her street. Maybe that's what we should do. Maybe the city of Villa Park should buy the home next door to her and put in the same facility. You know, something instead of litigation would be a lot cheaper, and we might be able to get her port across. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Neil Harness. I'm next door neighbors with Mort, and I, I also applaud the council for taking this seriously. I have six kids, ranging from five, well, I guess five to 15, and my biggest concern is their safety. I, I personally would have, not have a problem with them across the street from a sober living house on my own, but I really am concerned about the children. There's other children that are out blocking, there's nine or 10 children within about 100 yards of that sober living facility. So I have great concerns about their safety. And I, I would like to know, and you won't know now, but if you could tell me or find out, who is liable when something happens to somebody on our street? If something happens or something, something's vandalized, or there's a problem that occurs, who is liable? Is it the owner of that sober living facility? Is it the city of Villa Park? Who is liable? And that's, so that's my major, major question and concern. Maybe that could be answered next time we, we meet. And being a physician, I work with people with disabilities like this all the time. And I can tell you that somebody who's an alcoholic or somebody who's a drug addict, they're always an alcoholic, they're always a drug addict. Even if they've gone through treatment, they still have susceptibility to, you know, relapse. And that's, that could occur at any time, anywhere. And they have friends that come over, I know that there's visiting hours and, and this sort of thing till 10 o'clock, but that all, you know, is, again, if it's not regulated by the state, and it's not, they're not, they're not holding a license, I don't know what recourse we, we have when something goes wrong. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My, my name is Mark McCracken, and I'm actually a resident of the city of Irvine, but I'm here on behalf of my sister and her husband, who are residents of Villa Park. It's been about a little over two weeks ago, my sister was hit by a car crossing the crosswalk right over by Villa Park Elementary after her, taking her kids to school. And she's recovering, she's getting better, she's actually home now and resting. But my concern in, in talking to my sister and her husband is the lack of a, I guess at one time, there's been a crossing guard there at one time or another, and apparently there has not been one there for quite some, for a while at least. And my sister told me about several near misses of people turning, making right turns off of Villa Park Road onto, I think it's Center Street there. And, you know, the concern is, you know, and I'm sure it has to do with probably working with the school district as well, is, you know, what do we need to do to, to get a crossing guard back there again? And whether a crossing guard would have prevented this, you know, who's to say? But it's the, the kids there that I think deserve to have, you know, as much protection as they can get, because obviously Villa Park Road is a very busy street and, and, you know, people are trying to get their kids to school and, and probably aren't, sometimes not paying attention to what's going on. So I just wanted to come and say that on her behalf. So I hope that they can, you know, either the city or, or the district find the funds to put somebody over there again and, and make it a little bit safer for the kids. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Moran. I live at 10162 Workman Circle. I'm speaking today as a resident of Villa Park, but I bring with me my job position right now. I have worked for Supervisor Morlock. I'm one of his policy advisors for the last eight years. I brief him on healthcare agency and social service. So I have at my disposal, over the late eight years, much more than information that these people have on it, just because of the healthcare agency that I, that I deal with. And I think before all decisions are made, there does have to be a lot of research, because I just became aware of this, this weekend. I've gone into my records, and there's all sorts of different things that are different on sober housing. There is, there are licensed ones, which are by community care. There are also certified ones that are done by the sheriff. And there's also ones that have no type of OC. You need to know what type of, of program this is, if it's being set up to come in and get the mental health dollars to run a program there. There's many, many things that you need to look into this, to decide whether it's just a living place or it's a program, because it makes a big difference, and it may legally have a lot of difference for you on the, the part of it being run as a business. There is a study out now that the healthcare agency did on the study on recovery for these programs. It's very eye-opening on the recid, recidivism rate and what type of element you are bringing into your city. I am disappointed as a resident, because I sat here two months ago, and I am one of the captains for Neighborhood Watch. This is the kind of stuff we're supposed to know about. And through the research I've already done on this, is my understanding that this residence was, it has an OCFA permit for sprinklers instead of going through the normal city part. These, when you go to these different levels of group homes, whether it's a licensing or whether it's certified by the sheriff, or whether it's nothing, an element of whether or not you have to bring sprinklers into a house is an important piece. So you have a lot of research that needs to be done here, but as a resident, and especially as a Neighborhood Watch captain, to find this out the way I did, I don't get it. I mean, we're, we're being told that if you see cars that you don't recognize, we're supposed to know what's going on in our neighborhood. And this has been kept very, very quiet and very underneath. So I'm willing to see what it is. I understand the sober living facilities. I don't want to see Villa Park become what has happened with the executive director of the Recovery Bay Rehabilitation, who is listed as the owner on this, is Izzy Hinson. She's the executive director also, and she also is listed as the owner. And what you have in a lot of group home situations, you will have people come in and buy up a home, put in a program that basically pays their mortgage, and 20 years later, they walk off with the house, tapping down at, at sober living at the sea, if you remember that from 10 years ago. That's what you may be seeing here in Villa Park. And you need to look at the different vehicles, if this is what you run it, you know, give to your residents, and if this is what's going. I would just, I think it's too early to know exactly what's going on. I haven't been able to pull up all my files on this, but these are definitely things that I think you need to look into. And to be very honest, I think, to defer to your remarks, I think because there is some, there is definitely some business parts of this, but I think you need to look into business licensing, because there's a difference on all of this, too, because there can be a situation in which a person can buy a home and have six different individuals live there, and there's not a lot you can do either. So there's, there's a lot that I think you need to get your legal people in to understand what's going on. And I will be more than happy to share this stuff with you. I'm just a little bit further ahead of it than you are, and, and I will be glad to do that.
Thank you. Kathleen, you, you might want to share your contact information with city staff as well. Thank you.
Hello, Terry Elendorf, 10291 Camden Circle. I just have two questions. Are we permitted to know if any of these residences have a criminal record? And how serious a crime they may have committed to get drugs or, it just would be something that I would feel more comfortable knowing? And the other question is, if we have a halfway house in our neighborhood and we're selling our home, do we need to disclose this information to prospective buyers? That would certainly affect our ability to sell our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else?
Yeah, hi guys. My name's Jack Evans. I live across the street from this new lovely house. And I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but most of the stuff Jared said is absolutely not true. I live across the street from this house. Nobody lives there. We talked to the contractors today. Nobody has moved in there yet. In fact, their landscapers mow the lawn, they leave their trashcans out there. I put them in their backyard every week. They're absolutely full of crap. When Ed passed away, his daughters and his wife had some issues, so I went over there and helped them out. And we were told that a Asian lady bought it for her daughter, who lived in Huntington Beach, or, excuse me, Laguna Beach, and that she was moving in. Nobody's been in this house since the day they sold this house. I want to say three or four months ago. Not one person has been there. I live across the street. So the notion that Izzy tells you, Jared, that people have been there for two months, and there's four people living there, is a bunch of crap. Nobody lives there. There's no lights on, there's nobody there. I live across the street. I get up at 5:00 in the morning. There's no cars coming in or out. In fact, there was contractors there today, and we went and talked to them, and they said, no, we're not done. In fact, the only reason you guys found out is because Morty came over to my house Sunday night and said, I think it was Sunday, and said, hey, did you know? He went over there and talked to this fire sprinkler guy, and they said, oh no, this is an assisted living home, and I've come to find out it's a sober living home. I mean, I cannot believe you guys gave those people a license in our residence to allow that kind of crap, when there's just a bunch of kids on the street. It's just, I, it's unbelievable. And I understand there's a bunch of laws and whatnot to protect the Disability Act, but I think it's just a bunch of crap. I cannot believe we're going to allow this to happen in our city. I cannot believe we're going to allow this to happen in our city.
Any, any other speakers?
Can I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about the business license thing a little bit if I can. I brought this up many months ago when I was trying to make my play for getting rid of the business license admin fee in that nothing happens in order for the city to check anything out other than somebody fills out their name and gives them a check. No background check, nothing happens. They could be anything. They could write anything they want to down on those applications and they're automatically issued a business license. I think most residents assume that when a business license has been issued, a little bit more has gone into it than somebody just filling out an application and handing over a check. That's not the case. But we did issue a business license, correct?
When?
My question, yeah, well, my question is, can it be pulled? And how? That's, that's, that's a legal question. That's a legal question. You don't have to answer it right this minute. You need to answer it soon.
Megan, is this a discussion we can have? I mean, I'm happy to-
I'm just asking the question. I'm not, I'm just planting questions for you to consider, that's all.
I understand what you're doing. I just want to know what we can do because trust me, I'm no more, and I'm not any happier about this than anyone else. I just want to know what our latitude is, and we'll do this in an appropriate way. Can we have this discussion on this now?
This, this is not an agendized item, and so you're very limited in what you can do. You can effectively direct staff to research matters or look into things further, but it's, it's beyond the scope to get into a debate amongst council as to what to do with this.
I suspect that, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's much question, but what we would like to have it thoroughly investigated, know exactly what our options are.
Right.
That, that was, that was abundantly clear today before the meeting even occurred, so.
I think, I think today that we should take-
Can you come to the podium?
Yeah, yeah. If you'd like to speak, yeah, come on up.
Just simply giving them things to research, that's all. Find out how to make it happen.
I'm Suzie Goldman. I live down the street from this lovely new whatever that's going into our neighborhood that's, and I'd like to know when the license was issued for this place.
The license was issued July 21st, 2014.
In what name?
Recovery Bay with Izzy Hurson.
She does not tell the truth. She, when she bought the house from the Laritzes, she said that it was for her daughter, and there are not people living in it. This is a nightmare for our street. Something must be done about it. It's-
I think council's pretty much aware and concerned over the situation. We can't really get involved as a council at this meeting because we haven't agendized it and it's illegal. However, you can rest assured that staff is going to be looking into this and that they were doing that before this meeting ever occurred. The concerns arose well, well prior to this meeting. Go ahead.
I'm doing the same thing. Kathy Lai, live on Wildwood Way. My understanding is that she owns four other properties in Villa Park. Have she, have any of those properties been permitted for these sprinklers or a business permit being pulled on her other properties?
I don't have that information handy.
Yeah, I, but I just think, and, and how do you get things put on the agenda for next month? Is this, will this automatically-
This will be put on it. How's that?
I'm guessing it would, but, all right, thank you.
Any council member can put them on, so you can talk to any of the council members, but I'm sure this will be on.
Hi, my name's Holly Von Ting. I lived at 10241 Camden Circle. My question at this point would be, by the time it's agendized next month, I would be afraid that that facility would be filled by then, by waiting another, another month to, to talk about this. So my question would be, with 20-plus kids that live within a stone's throw of this, of this facility, what are options at this point? And can you?
I, I don't think we can respond to that. I think council frankly has already addressed the issue. We don't have the facts. We're researching the law and we don't know where we are. So, so first of all, we can't really get involved because it's not agendized, but even if we did, we really don't have the information in terms of the facts or the law, so there's not much we could talk about. It's kind of like beating the proverbial dead horse, and we just don't know.
Okay, but it sounds like-
We're looking at it.
That it isn't, it isn't filled, so maybe we're a little bit ahead of the eight ball here.
I think, if I may, I really feel like her question is a valid question. You know, there's no rule that says you have to wait until the next meeting. What would it take for there be to, they think time is of the essence, and perhaps that's true. What would it take for there to be an urgency meeting of the council set and what would the potential action be?
The council can hold special meetings at its discretion, so that's a possibility. Any action taken relating to this property, to the extent it requires, council action obviously requires a meeting. It's unclear without all the facts what the action would be though. I mean, if it's not operating, it's different than if it is operating, it's different than if it's code compliant or not code compliant. There's just a universe of things that we don't know right now, so I'm sorry, but I don't have a great answer as to what action to take without knowing more.
So what we can-
Are you going to be doing the research on this, Megan, yourself?
Yes, sir.
So what we can say though is if we're going to get the information, the city manager's going to get the information and it'll be conveyed to us. If we get enough information that we know who they are, what property they own in Villa Park, what type of facility they are, this council will hold a, a special council meeting. I mean, and, and we will do that. It's great that, you know, I'm emailing you and trying to keep you up to date, but if we get enough information, we will hold the meeting. What do we, three days notice?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours notice, and we'll do that and we'll notify everyone. We don't need to wait 30 days, but we have to have some information to hold the meeting. So with that-
And with that in mind, I think Kathy Moran offered a, she's done a tremendous amount of research already in her current position, so I think Kathy's ready to be a resource.
And I don't have any problem doing that, and I don't think anyone else here has that either.
I think that, I think that it's urgent enough that, that I would say that that would be the direction of this council, that we not wait and take a couple of days to get into it immediately, dig into it right away tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
There was a cleaning crew cleaning that house up yesterday.
The, the process is well underway. We already had a tentative schedule to have a summary sheet out this week with the various programs and requirements and what, what we might be able to do. But council's looking at it, and frankly, you know, they're going to have to do what they're going to have to to get the information, and when that's available, if it, if it's appropriate, and we can do anything with a special council meeting, I can assure you, I mean, I know this council pretty well, there'll be no problem setting a special meeting. We just got to get the information and ascertain what our options are. There's no point to come back and sit here shaking our heads again. It's just pointless. It's just a waste of your time, our time. Let's let them get the information. Let's let them do the legal research. Let's get, let's get a brief. Let's get some options. We'll know what we can do, and then we can sit down and have a, you know, an intelligent meeting and some more public comment. But until then, it's pointless. As soon as that shows up, you know, I'm happy to, to call a meeting anytime, so. And I think the whole council's on board with that. Probably all shaking their head.
Yes.
Yep. So it's a pretty small community here. You won't, you won't find problems with that. We just need to know where we're at and what our options are. It's going to take a little time to figure it out. Hopefully not very much time, and as soon as we get it, we'll act.
Hi, I'm Katie Peterson. I live in City of Orange, not in Villa Park, and I just wanted to talk about the, not including the law, but the people who are staying at the sober facilities. I've witnessed it firsthand. And there could be people in Villa Park also that are alcoholics or addicted to drugs that want the help in the city they live in that they feel safe in. And I understand the concern about where the homes are located, but witnessing it myself with family, you would want your city to be recognized as a place that accepts people that are sober, that have problems, because not everybody's perfect, but in that Villa Park supplies the needs of their, of their citizens here and others who would like to be a part of a place like this, who need help, who want to fix themselves.
Thank you. I mean, frankly, there, there's, there's a point there as well. You know, it isn't just this issue. We've got other issues with regard to activities or structures or whatever it may be that, that we maybe don't find real desirable. And one of the problems is that some of the stuff's needed and, you know, nobody wants it if they can avoid it. So that, that's the other side of the coin. But that said, we will move as rapidly as we can on this, and as soon as we have anything that's sufficient to act on, we'll be happy to call another meeting.
Can I, can I just add one more thing? It was very nice what she had to say about helping these people out, which I think most of us would agree to. But this is being run as a commercial enterprise for profit. It is very profitable. If she was doing this altruistically and saying, I bought this house and I'm going to have them come here to rehab so they can get back into society, we'd probably all agree what a wonderful thing it is. But she's not doing it for those reasons. She's doing it because there's money to be had, and that's an altogether different, what should I say, bottle of wax.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank everyone for taking the time to come down here and have the interest to discuss it and present it. All right. Item one is a public hearing with regard to a variance permit. Jennifer, who's presenting that? Jennifer, are you going to present that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. Jennifer will present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is consideration of a variance, a request to reinstate an old variance approval that was provided back in 2001. This would be a little bit different than the application that was approved at that time, part of which is because our code has changed, and so all of the requests that went through before aren't necessary now, thanks to some of our code revisions. However, the applicant does still have encroachment into the side and the front yard setbacks. The way that our code is written, we actually have a provision that allows our city manager the review and approval of some small encroachments into the side yard setback. However, because this application also included a front yard setback encroachment, we felt it was better to bundle it together and bring it to the council for approval. So that's why you're seeing that request, although it does meet the administrative relief portion of our code. So essentially what you have before you is a request to add onto a home. They'll be adding a basement, a garage, and then a second dwelling unit above the garage. All of the facility meets all of the other development standard requirements, so there's no other changes to site coverage, FAR, or anything else. But our code has a funny little provision. We're still working on those cleanup items, as you recall. We have a funny provision that says you could have a staircase that encroaches into the front yard setback. But once we enclose the staircase, you can't encroach into the front yard setback. So essentially, the request tonight to encroach into the front yard setback is for that staircase, but because the applicant has chosen to put it behind a nice wall and try to fit it into the house elevation so that it's not as visible from the street, it requires a variance permit. So with that, staff is recommending approval of both the encroachment into the side yard setback because it is a minor encroachment, and the front yard setback meeting the findings that it really maintains the character of the neighborhood, it is not a special granting of a privilege because this is an unusual circumstance with that staircase, as well as the lot configuration, which we've identified in your staff report. We're happy to answer any questions you might have, and the applicant is here this evening if you have any questions for them as well.
Jennifer, were there any objections?
We have received no calls, no objections.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, this did go to CDC, and CDC is also recommending approval of this as well.
Council have any questions of staff?
Looks like a nice project.
Yeah. Okay. Any community response or comments? Mr. Baker?
Just the encroaching applicant.
Bill Baker, 18301 Hillcrest on the corner of Center.
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, I'd like to thank the staff for their recommendations. I'll submit on the tentative. I'll go with the staff report. If you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them. But I will tell you that before the last council meeting when it was originally set, I did approach my neighbors with a written letter with a map and a photograph of, from Google Maps, of what it would sort of look like from the street, from above, and I received back from my neighbors consents. The, I passed out a little over 20, I think it was 21 or 22, letters, and I got back 12 consents from neighbors who are directly affected by it. They either live across the street or next to me or down the street, and they'd be driving past this every day. We have tried to do it, I have my, my designer here. We have tried to do it in a very architecturally nice way, in keeping with the house that's there, but more importantly, to get my cars off the driveway and in the garage. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have one. The individuals that signed those documents, did they attend a cocktail party with any timeframe to residents that they were signing?
Not yet.
The grand opening, right?
The grand opening, that's it. No questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much for your time.
Very nice.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, if I might.
Oh no, I actually have something else.
Okay. Just one thing before Megan Johnson. We have a condition that we'd like to add to the resolution. It's actually already a condition of our code that deals with second dwelling units that requires a deed restriction be placed on the property, and so we would add that condition and essentially just enforces an item that's already on the books and in our code.
What's the restriction?
It deals with property ownership and telling the next property owner that this is a second dwelling unit and that they have to abide by all the conditions that are in the code. So the size of the structure and all of those things that are in place. So it's kind of a disclosure requirement, if you will.
So would that be condition number three, special condition three?
Thank you, yes it would.
Okay.
So if someone want to make a motion, incorporate that?
I'll move. I'll move that.
Okay.
Actually, our attorney-
Our attorney asked something else.
Mr. Mayor, may, we skipped on the agenda, the waiver and reading of full of all ordinances and resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So before we take a motion on this-
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
You're right, I did, I missed it. Yeah, so I would propose that we, I guess I make a motion to waive the reading in full of the ordinance of resolutions as they're already on the agenda.
Second.
Jared?
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? None?
I apologize for that, I missed it.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2014-3300, Resolution of the City Council, the City of Villa Park approving variance permit number 0761 with the addition of special condition number three, deed restrictions as outlined by Jennifer Lilly.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
So when you have that cocktail party, yeah.
We're all coming.
Okay. Moving on to item two. Oh, this, item two regarding the conditional use permit, I think maybe Jared on that one.
Also pass this one up to the chairman.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're acting, asking that this item be continued until the next meeting. We have a couple of issues, one of which is the property owner's signature on the application, and also the CDC has not had an opportunity to meet with the applicant in order to work through steleting requirements and some of the other issues. But most importantly is with the structural integrity of the pole. The structural review has come back from our city engineer and has found that the intensification of the pole, if you will, has put it into the, to the area that's gray from an engineer's perspective that says it's not quite past the point of being structurally unsafe, but it's in that area that causes concern. And our structural engineer believes that there's some additional information that wasn't reviewed by the structural engineer of record, and they want that additional information in order to verify that it is in fact safe. So not having that information tonight ready to go, we'd like to ask that you continue the item until next month.
Someone like to make that motion?
Most of it, most such, and I'd like to make the note that, have they taken all the winch here in account here?
That's, that has been taken into account, however, our structural engineer believes that additional information is needed.
Thank you.
Jared?
Yes, this is a motion to continue it to the, uh, December 16th meeting.
I'm all for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, hearings continue.
All right, the next item is our consent calendar, so let me just ask, uh, council members, does anyone want to pull any consent items?
I'd like to pull number five.
I think we almost had a clean, if you hadn't done that, I think we almost had a clean sweep, I've never seen that happen.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, well, how about you want to make a motion on the rest of them?
Yeah, I move to, uh, approve three, four, six, and seven on the consent calendar.
Second.
Jared?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the remainder, on to number five.
I read these minutes and they're, they're weak, um, and I realize, I had a, a meeting here with, um, Jared, and I realized that the DVD is the final authority, but I do believe that our written minutes are easier to read for our residents as well as the council when they're scanned in online, and we need a little more detail. There was a lot of discussion during the public hearing, um, for items number one, for item number three, um, the entire council, you know, didn't comment. Item number, you know, I'm looking at item number thirteen, and I'll give you an example, Lieutenant Gunzo explains a squad car mileage for the month of September. A, a little more detail should be noted that there, he also indicated that we have three other cars that are traveling and it wasn't just one car, um, that was traveling. So we don't need to go into too much detail, but specifically, I'd like to make a mention on item fourteen, that the city council discussion ensued, but there was no comment from Councilman Reese and myself, and if we could make note of that, in that, that would be, um, beneficial, and if we could put Alexia's title, she was a school board member underneath that, it shows that she's a resident and...
Actually, Dr. Alexia Delagiani, I think that's appropriate. She's actually the vice chair of Orange Unified School District. That would be appropriate.
Thank you. Um, and see, on the next page, we have Sally Faber instead of Ally. So all I'm looking, maybe we just need to review it, and if you could want to send us another copy of it and we'll take a look at it, that'd be great, but a little more detail in our written minutes would be beneficial to our residents and I think to the council with that.
Do you want to move that one?
So I would like to move it, move it with a resi, a revision coming to us for final approval. Okay, yeah, so I move that.
Second.
We'll just, uh, continue with them, we'll add some meat to the skeleton.
Thank you.
We get a second?
Yeah, I second.
I thought so. Okay, go ahead, Jared.
Uh, I, I received a direction, so we can move on to item number eight.
Okay, I presume we have a presentation from Michelle on this one?
We do. I am turning on the projector. She'll be ready in a minute.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Jared, um, basically what we have before us today, eventually we'll be able to see it, is, um, the payoff of the PERS side fund. This has been the topic of the pensions are out of hand, and what can we do as a city, what's feasibly financially stable, and as we are still waiting to get back from PERS, the actual, potential termination liability that we will have to pay off, um, not quite sure, when I spoke with Carrie, um, our contact at PERS this last week, he hadn't heard anything, so he had no numbers yet, um, we don't know what the, the big picture payoff is, but we were trying to take off a piece of the, the pie, if you will. The PERS rate, um, as in the staff reported, that there's, there's a bunch of different percentages that make up our PERS employer's contribution. And the biggest thing that our city has that larger cities don't have is a side fund, and the side fund is because we have less than a hundred employees, blah, 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 we had it put into a risk pool, um, lot of boring details, but, so we have the side fund percentage that we have to pay every year. The potential to pay it off as of December 31st this year is, um, you'll see the lump sum prepayment amount is $253,525. Now, this, that, the true savings that we would have if we were to continue to pay it for the next, um, seven years to, um, 2021, the payments are $326,000, so $72,000 would be the savings that we would have. You lose interest based on the money that you pay out, so, you know, net, maybe $60,000 that we would, true savings, because we're going to make a lot of interest in dealing. So basically, it's, um, as the mayor and I were speaking a little bit earlier today is, yeah, if you're going to save $60,000 over the next few years and you have the ability to pay it, it sounds like a good deal. Some of the numbers that we wanted to point out to you is our unfunded liability right now is $939,000. Now that means that we have a funded ratio of what we have paid into our market value of our PERS is 74%. If we pay this lump sum payment off, it bumps up, bumps us up about 4%, so our estimated unfunded liability is $686,000. Now, unfortunately, that's not what we would have to pay off. I know, it kind of sounds like, oh, if we just pay that off, then we'll all be good. Yeah, no, there's all the actuarial calculations that go into that, and it's a million plus more. So even though that's a small number and it looks really great, um, it does bring down our funded portion, and that's obviously a good thing, is what we're trying to do is be fully funded. And the last slide is to show you what our current rate is, is 22.692, and that's the employer's rate. Now again, the staff pays, um, 6% of the 7%, which is the employer's, employees portion, next year it'll be full 7%. So this is just the employer's rate as of today, no employee, um, rate included. We take off this, um, side fund, our effective rate as of January, what would be 11%. So it's, it's a big chunk. And so the staff report before you states that, you know, the savings could be net into about $60,000 over the next, um, seven years, six years. We're waiting for your direction, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Michelle?
Yes, excuse, go ahead, Rick.
Can we go back a slide, because I think I may have actually understood something for the first time.
Don't.
This unfunded li, this is the gross unfunded liability, right?
Right.
Okay. So can I assume, if you know or can understand what they're telling you, is that essentially the liability that if we want to terminate, that will probably turn into several million dollars because they will change, they will change the, uh, the cap rate on it from seven and a half to 1% or so for a T-bill rate? And that'll turn into several million dollars?
Correct.
So that's the deal?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, now that I understand, I, I could explain this now.
If you have, I have our current, um, actual report, and our hypothetical termination liability is 2.8 million as of June 30th, 2013. You know, they have to calculate it up a couple of years. So when I was talking with Carrie, I'm like, okay, so now if we pay this off, what does it do to that number? And basically, it increases our market value, so takes off that 253,000 of the 2.8. So it's, it's a true reduction of 253,000 on, um, your hypothetical number. So, I mean, it is, it is a quite a significant, like, straight line reduction.
So, so the 253 would give us a dollar for dollar pay down, but the 686, we're stuck at the 1% figure, okay?
Yeah, that's going to be the whole re-actuary, a little calculation that will, yeah.
Okay, so let me share this, because I've heard this so many different places, Dr. Simefield, let me, let me share this with council, just if I, if I cross the line or I'm incorrect, just, just wave, wave at me, but here's my understanding, and this goes from all kinds of sources. CalPERS is using about a 7.5% earnings rate. So when they take their pool of money, all these funds we've paid in for retirement, they calculate, they calculate what their future actuarial costs are going to be to, to pay all these retirement funds out, all these speculative numbers, basically, who's going to live how long, how much they're going to make 30 years from now, and how much are we going to need to pay them off, obviously ridiculous to think you could really do that, but they do it, okay? They come up with a number. Then they look at the pool of money they have from our contributions and they say, okay, well, how much money do we need at 7.5% a year interest earnings on this fund in order to have enough money down the road to pay these corresponding pension claims? And that's where they come up with these numbers, that's where they come up with our percentage, that's essentially what, what this number is, if we pay off this, actually, I guess it's probably the whole number, the whole 939. So they say that based on that calculation, Villa Park, you have a deficit of $939,557 in present value funds, you'd have to write us a check, and then that would cover your deficit. The problem is this, if they would let us out of the fund, I suspect this council probably vote to, to bail out and move on and pay the $939,000. If you elect to terminate your CalPERS participation, then instead of giving you credit for 7.5% on that money, since you no longer have any liability in the fund, they take it down to like a 1% T-bill rate, so that all of a sudden, when they discount it, when they, when they figure they're only going to earn 1% on the money instead of the 7.5% they normally calculate, gee, that's going to take $3 million to pay it off. So if I understand this correctly, the 253, they'll let us pay off and they'll give us the complete credit as long as we stay in the plan. If we try and get rid of the rest of this, that's going to turn into a several million dollar number. Okay? And so what they're doing is on this, if we don't pay that off in a lump sum, I assume that the numbers you gave us is what it's going to be over six years with a 7.5% interest rate on it.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so either we keep the money and hedge our bet to see what happens to CalPERS, because the Lord only knows what's, what's going to, what's going to happen there, whether they're going to make it, whether, you know, the state's going to step in, bottom falls out of the stock market and their fund's worth very little. So if we want that security of sitting back with our money rather than paying it all out and then being there with an insolvent CalPERS down the road, we have to sit there and pay them their 7.5% interest. If we give them the money, then, uh, one of two things will happen. They'll either earn more than we do, which I'm sure they'll do because their investments aren't as secure, uh, they will either invest that and maybe get their 7.5%, or they won't, and that will just continue to create a deficit at the fund, and then they'll just increase our ongoing current rate to compensate for the fact that they didn't get the 7.5% on the money of the 253,000 that we did pay them. Is that a pretty good, uh?
That's, that's how I understand how it's going to roll out, so.
So, so this is kind of a no-win, um, and the trade-off seems to me is this, we either hold our money, pay the 7.5% to CalPERS on the interest, and see what happens to CalPERS, which is speculative.
It's not going to get any better.
No, or we pay them the 7, we pay them the 253, we get off the hook on the 7.5% for that money, at least directly, and then maybe we pay our share of an across-the-board increase they do to everybody because they didn't earn enough money on their fund. So...
I have three questions.
Kind of a no-win.
I have, I have three questions. I, I see we're going to, we're going to be, first of all, if we were to do this, we're pulling money out of Orange County Investment Pool and Life. Is that actually then tapping into our undesignated reserves?
No.
No, okay, that was, okay, very good. What is an acceptable, um, estimated funding ratio? We're sitting at 74% right now, give or take, 78%? I mean, I mean, that sounds pretty good compared to what...
True. I, I see where you're going with this. We, I spoke a lot with Tustin, the City of Tustin, who obviously did the same. I think their rate, hold on one second, I believe, no, I don't have their rate. I think in the eighties is what I, I have seen.
Okay.
So I...
That would put us closer then to where we would really want to be comfortably, is what you're saying.
Yes, I, I mean, I think for me, the problem with PERS is that there's so many moving pieces, and when you call and you get your information, it changes the next day, and then it changes two more days after that, and you're talking about one thing with somebody and you're like, okay, I understand that it's supposed, there, there's a concept that shouldn't change, but the concept seems to be, um, a big ball of wax, that just, I mean, you know what I mean? I mean, it's, for, I know I'm not really articulating this very well, but it, it's a, it's a mess, it's an absolute mess.
Sort of like a moving target in a fishbowl.
It is, it is, and it's, and it's frustrating because as much as, I'm like, okay, I get it, I get, I get this piece of the puzzle, and then I go and I ask one more question, I'm like, now I don't get it, now it doesn't make, doesn't make sense, you know, and how they explained it to me was that your, um, obviously your market value is going to change, um, based on the investment value of the entire pool along with yours as well. That's what, that's where our actual aerial number comes from, but it's two years prior, so then we got to pull in your current year stuff. So it's, I'm like, well, I have my current year stuff, and I know it only went up this percentage, yeah, well, that, but then we have this, this part that we have to bring into in the longevity rate, so there's so many pieces, I'm not an actuary, and they speak a completely different language, but there's like 55 pieces that go into the calculation that make your head want to pop.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's interesting that you bring it, Kathy Moran, who was here, she is actually an actuary by trade, so you might want to talk to her, you might want to just hire her, no. She's going to be out of a job here, I understand, in a little while, because I'm looking at this projected side fund payments, they go, they're ratcheting up year after year after year after year, we don't know how much, it could go up even more.
It will.
So if, if, if we're paying this off now and they've given us a letter
Right.
with a date on it, um, that, that kind of locks at least that in. But there's one sentence in this letter that's from CalPERS that stands out to me, and I would like you to address that for me. It's the last sentence in the paragraph, they've told you if you pay everything off by X date, um, you're good to go, but any later adjustments due to plan amendments, vouchers, golden handshakes, or financing changes could increase or re-establish a negative side fund. See, they're the ones that established the side fund for us in the first place, they forced us into it in 2003.
Right.
Right? So what prevents them from deciding, ah, you got to go back into a side fund?
Exactly, we had, no, no concept on that.
You mean, they could actually require another side fund to be established?
That's what this says right here.
I think so, but I, I think because it's based on a percentage of your, um, payroll, that's what the side fund is based on, you know, less than a hundred employees, based on a percentage of, um, your payroll, based on a, an estimate, um, accelerator each year, that I don't see, I mean, when I read that, like, the golden handshake, I, I don't see the City of Villa Park.
We would never do that.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that that would affect us. I really, I mean, with my experience, I don't think that that would, and we don't have the vouchers, we don't do any large plan amendments, I, I don't, I don't specifically foresee that to be an issue for Villa Park.
Okay.
Now, with PERS though, there could be a new law saying, okay, now if you have below 50, we're going to do this, you know, I mean, I can't, that's a whole other piece of wax, but if you're, speaking, speaking about this letter, I don't think we would have an issue.
Thank you.
If you kind of feel like you're dealing with a Ponzi scheme and a con when you have that conversation?
Yeah, right.
I really enjoy PERS, let's just put it that way.
Yeah, this is, this is extremely, if this were a conventional contract, a private party, you know, this would be a no-brainer decision, nobody in their right mind, in my opinion, would, would not do this to save probably a $65,000 net, even after you offset the, the investment return that we'll lose by taking the money out of our 1% fund, it's probably still, what, a $65,000 savings? $10,000 plus a year, $11,000 a year.
Ten, ten grand a year.
But, um...
Ten grand a year. Which, quite frankly, the way the regular CalPERS payments have been ratcheting up, it's probably going to just about break even.
Probably.
I think the best thing is to do it, it seems like a decent investment, this stupid thing ain't going nowhere, and, um, I'd say do it, my own opinion. It's my thoughts.
What, what does the finance committee, uh, say about this, Rick?
Well, you know, this, I mean, this is just, you really can't make a really, really rational evaluation, because the reality is, CalPERS is a Ponzi scheme, okay? So how do you invest $250,000 into a Ponzi scheme to get a comfort level, okay? I mean, that's, that's the, that's the bottom line. This is a much bigger issue at, at FIRE, I mean, it's a... This is a much bigger issue at, at FIRE, I mean, it's a huge issue there, and, you know, what's frustrating is, I can't tell you, I've, the couple of years I've been there, I watched staff come up with this big smile on their face, "We balanced the budget," you know, "We have a great gal down there, she's really good," and I've balanced the budget, and all excited, you know, I look at it, I think to myself, "Well, you know, that's, that's great, you, you balanced it for now, but next year, they can make an adjustment, and all of a sudden, last year's and the year before and the year before are unbalanced." So, the reality is, you don't have any idea, I mean, how, how do you, how do you come out of, of a Ponzi investment with any stability? So, you know, you almost might as well go get, you know, some dice. I, I've gone back and forth on this about three times myself, on the one hand, I look at it and I say, "Well, you know what, if we, if we pay the quarter million dollars, we get rid of the side fund, and we're down to what, an eleven something percent contribution rate, okay?" Which is great, so that puts us in the pool with everybody else, and at least we don't have to deal with the seven and a half percent that we can't earn on the two hundred and fifty-three thousand that they're gonna charge us, I mean, this will be the one investment that they will get seven and a half percent out of us. So, to that extent, my inclination is to do it. On the other side, um, I'm concerned that CalPERS is so unstable, uh, the minute there's a glitch in this stock market, which I fully expect to see in the next couple of years, and most of the brokerage people you talk to, I think, would say the same thing, if the stock market turns, guess what's gonna happen to CalPERS, and the assessments are gonna go sky-high. So now, we paid our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, and now they're just gonna ratchet us up anyway, so, you know...
Wouldn't they ratchet both, they'd ratchet both of them up anyway, right?
Yeah, well, I wouldn't ratchet this one up, but they, but they would certainly ratchet the other one up, you know, and I'm just thinking if it gets bad enough, maybe the state or the Fed or somebody has to come in and bail them out, and then what have we done to Villa Park? We went and paid up in advance all our money, so that the Fed or state can come in and bail out CalPERS, you know, and, 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 and we end up having lost our money. All of that said, as disgusting as it is to me, my inclination is probably to pay it. The reason being that, you know, I can't factor all that, I can't factor all that in, the one thing I do know is they've got the side fund in there, and they're charging a seven and a half percent, and I sure don't expect to see it go away.
Right.
And it's kinda unique to Villa Park, so, I mean, there's other cities, but, but there's a, a small, limited group of cities that are dealing with this, correct, Michelle? Okay, so, it's, it's a unique billing...
See, the thing is, is if we already have a side fund, the chance of them coming in and saying, "There have been financing changes, so we need to establish a side fund for you," are, are reduced.
They could do that anyway, probably will.
It's, it's, I can see both sides of this thing, too. The, the positives for me are, we've got the money, it's hardly earning any interest.
Right.
We're not dipping into reserves, which, you know, I go through the roof when we start dipping into reserves unless we have a real emergency. It gets us closer to what is a, an acceptable estimated funding ratio.
No one knows what the funding ratio is, because CalPERS has got a weed-gourd, no one can predict those costs.
All right, but based on their magical numbers de jour, and the fact that the projected side fund payments could ratchet up even higher than they already are set to do.
Right, it's an estimated three percent.
Because it's all a projection, and, and we've watched these things just go up and up and up and up, so, I would support you if you wanna do this, I would, I would love to hear from Mr. Nelson if he has some input on this, because he is quite the expert in this area, which is probably one of the reasons why he was the top vote-getter in the city of Villa Park. I, I would like to hear, wouldn't you like to hear what he has to say about it?
To be quite honest, when you were done there, I was gonna say, "Bill, if you'd like to have your input..."
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would, I would, I would enjoy hearing it.
I would like, I would like to hear it.
I would love to comment on it. First off, Mr. Mayor, it's not a Ponzi scheme, because it's not gonna collapse, the taxpayers are gonna pay for this. They're not gonna bid, the federal, state, no one's gonna bail it out, these are guaranteed benefits, you notice yourself in the Stockton case, they didn't get out of it in bankruptcy. The city's gonna pay whatever they have to pay to pay these benefits, it's gonna come from the taxpayers, is who it's gonna come from. To me, this is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
You're paying seven and a half percent on a loan, it's just like a mortgage, and, and are you earning one percent? You take this one percent money and pay that seven and a half percent off, that's it, you, you save seventy-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, Frank, that's, that was, that's...
Everyone that I know that has money has paid off the side fund.
I, I can't...
They paid it off, 'cause it's just, it's just absolutely no-brainer from a financial standpoint.
I, I don't know that I agree with you on the other side, that this is all gonna be paid by the taxpayer, I think, I think it may fall apart.
It is, it's, no, it is, it's guaranteed.
I, I understand that, but it's...
The taxpayers are on the hook, anyone would say the taxpayers are the one that's on the hook. So, the best thing to do is manage it responsibly and minimize the risk on the taxpayers.
I, I do tend, I do tend to agree, because although I don't necessarily agree that that's the way it's gonna play out, the reality is, that's speculative, this isn't, and, at least as to this side fund, and you're right, it's six and a half percent, that's what I was saying, it's a big spread, so I, I tend to agree, I tend to agree.
That's, that's what you're paying on, it's just like...
Better of the two decisions.
It's just like a seven and a half percent mortgage, and you, you're paying it off, and you're getting rid of the mortgage.
Yep.
And your money that you're paying it off with, you're earning one percent on it.
That's right.
So, you can continue to pay it and continue to pay the seven and a half percent, or, or you can pay it off.
It's still a Ponzi scheme, though.
It's not a Ponzi scheme.
All right, still meets the definition, if you don't pour the money in, it falls apart, it's not, it's underfunded.
The citizens are gonna have to put their money in, whatever money is necessary to support PERS, the citizens are gonna have to pay it.
By law, we gotta do it.
Yeah, by law, they're gonna have to pay it. It's a legally mandated Ponzi scheme, but it's a Ponzi scheme.
Okay.
So, anyway.
I, I grant you that.
What's, what's the next move?
I tend to agree.
I'd make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the Finance Director to amend the Employee Benefits Fund Expenditures Budget by increasing the retirement expenditures by two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, and approve the lump sum payment to CalPERS of two hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to be dispersed by December thirty-first, before the numbers change. Eliminate, I'm just, I'm just reading the...
We haven't had public comment yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we just did.
Well, we asked, we invited Bill up, but, and there probably won't be any other, is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter? There being none, go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
And then eliminating the miscellaneous side fund.
Second.
Good.
Second?
Greg just seconded it, you didn't hear him, he's over here.
Go ahead.
I'm back in the corner, Rick, that's so hard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pauli.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Reese.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fasenelli.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Grudgingly yes.
Motion carries.
Is that word gonna show up in the written minutes?
I never, I never thought, I never thought I would voluntarily commit public funds to a Ponzi scheme, and I just did it.
Legally mandated Ponzi scheme.
Legally, yeah, legally mandated Ponzi scheme, okay. Uh, all right, what are we on to, number?
Nine.
Nine?
Number nine.
Lost my tab here. Oh, my item, okay.
This is yours.
Yeah, I know, I just, I, I just thought it might be appropriate to establish a Deficit and Risk Reduction Committee. One of the items I think probably would focus on would be the CalPERS items, and I'm thinking that maybe that committee could, we could get some, maybe get some outside participation, and also, I know I've been in touch with mayors from other cities that are concerned about the CalPERS issue, and are thinking about addressing it through legislative channels, and I felt that a, a Deficit and Risk Reduction Committee might not be a bad thing to have across the board, however, this would clearly be an initial primary focus, and maybe it could inter, interface with some other cities, and maybe we can get something done on this.
Would this be a permanent committee, you're proposing?
Yeah, I think so.
Or, or should it be an adjunct committee to the Finance Committee?
Ad hoc, or adjunct, there you go.
I mean, I, I think this, this is, is a Finance Committee falls under that.
Yeah, so do I.
I think you can also invite other folks in on ad hoc committees underneath that, 'cause it's gonna be, this is a specific issue we're looking at right now.
Yeah, it is right now, you're right.
And I, I just thought that, that might, might be the easiest way to handle it. It's not like we're...
I, I think it's handled in the Finance Committee quite, quite frankly, that we don't need a separate committee for that.
But I appreciate that you're bringing it up, but I think it should be an item that is, is reported off from time to time, would be the appropriate thing to do, but I, I see your point, I mean, I think it's important. But the, the risk reduction, is this strictly, strictly financial?
Financial, this is just strictly financial.
Or is this also liability insurance, other, other issues?
It would be financial, financial risk, you know, criminal issues, et cetera, I think you're gonna see a motion for another committee on that after the new council's seated, so, but...
Criminal?
Crime prevention.
Crime prevention.
Crime prevention committee.
I think, I think Councilman-elect Colacott has been thinking about something along that nature.
News to me, new stuff coming in.
Anyway, um...
I, can I just say this, I think using the word deficit is, is like an alarm, that's, that sends alarm bells off, and, and if people in the city of Villa Park saw you establish suddenly this Deficit Reduction Committee, they would start thinking that we had problems, and I think that, that's not accurate.
We do have, we, I mean, they're, they're not, they're not self-composed, that we have significant exposure.
We have a Ponzi scheme problem, I know.
Yep, we do, and we're, we're, we're a player, we're a seven-figure player, so...
Okay.
Anyway, you know, I don't know that we even have to take action on it at this point, I just wanted to bring it up and kinda get a sense of the council on it, and frankly, I thought it might be a good way to implement it through the other cities, I have not heard back most recently from one of the mayors that was most active on it, it's got back to me after the election, so, we can, we can shelve this for a while, it's, it's fine, and, and if, when I hear back, then, then maybe, maybe we'll take a little more action.
But I mean, I, I think the, the Finance Committee should take this up, I mean, obviously, that's, that's right in that, making an item they report on.
That's true, just do it as a Finance Committee item, and just, that's fine, too, I think, that makes sense, okay. All right, so much for item nine, on to item ten. Oh, the individual council member items, well, look at this, it's only eight-thirty, so if we don't beat this to death with a lot of show and tell, and we just stick to our mandated items, we could probably be out of here at a precedent-setting hour, so with that said...
Should I start by a timer?
Yeah, and we, I, I don't, I don't...
I heard it go off while ago.
I think we can hold it under the time, but, um, does anyone have, maybe we'll start, does anyone have any mandatory reports? No mandatory, how about, how about those that feel compelled to make a non-mandatory report?
I didn't go to Victor Control this month, because it's coming on Thursday, because we are on our third Tuesday and, and the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, right, it came up quick this time.
So, it's, nothing's happened since then.
Right, okay.
No reports, same reason, my sanitation meeting's tomorrow.
And I'll have to...
I know, frankly, I, I really don't...
It's only been three weeks.
My sense of this, we could deal with this probably with new council, but, you know, I really don't see the point in burning a lot of council time on just reporting for the sake of reporting, you know, if there's something material that really affects the community, and people need to hear, that's one thing, but just to tell these for the sake of telling that we went to a meeting, you know, to me, is, is kinda pointless, we can, well, this will get, I know this is gonna get discussed again, the council, but...
Rick, we have to, I have to report about Vector, that's part of the deal with, with Vector, I have to at least say something about it.
Okay, well, that's fine, that's fine.
Our council's going to help along with that.
There are certain meetings that council members attend for which they receive a stipend that require a report.
Oh, I understand that, yeah, no, I understand that, but that's why I asked if there was any mandatory report.
Correct.
I'm aware of that, so, anyway.
And those that we expend city funds to attend as well, also would require, would trigger that.
Correct.
It would be nice if it said, they say more than just, "I attended this meeting."
I like the, I like the individual council people speaking on things that they've done, because we do attend seminars, we think, we do attend items that are of no cost to the city, and we do that for the benefit of educating ourselves and bringing it back to the people. So, I, I do like the fact that we can tell you where we've been and what we've done for the city, sometimes, it's noteworthy, I mean, I attended five or six meetings this month, I really don't have anything to say on them, nothing was noteworthy enough to do it.
That's where I was headed.
We had an election.
But also, this doesn't take up that much time in the meeting.
I happen to like it.
And we're tired by the end of the meeting, so it's not, not coming along.
Megan, I have a question, you know, I know we need approval for stipend, you know, to be appointed to stipend committees, but, do we, and, and I know that we have to report on anything that the city spends money on, but I received a conflicting comment the other day regarding the need to report on stipend committee activity where the city has no expenditure of funds, so in other words, FIRE, for example.
Right.
Am I compelled to report on FIRE even though the city expends no funding on it?
Because you receive a stipend.
But you receive a stipend.
Other than that one point three or four million dollars from our property taxes that goes to the FIRE authority, other than that...
I would just like to know on that issue.
That was standing.
If the city does not expend any money, if it's an appointment to a committee, and there's a stipend, but it's a non-city, it's a non, it's non-city funds, is there an obligation to report on that, or merely an obligation to report on activities the city has funded?
If I could review the FPPC regulation and give you, because I'm not sure, based on what you're saying, exactly how it reads, I'll give you a answer back.
Okay, oh, 'cause I've had, I've heard conflicting comments on that, all right, so, does anyone have...
I have one thing I'd like to report on, and that has to, first of all, I want to congratulate the three newly-elected members of the Villa Park City Council, it was, it was wonderful to have six really good candidates, and for the residents to actually have an opportunity to select those of their choosing, so, congratulations to Bill Nelson, Bob Colacott, and Deanna Fasenelli. We will have an elected majority beginning next month, and I think that's very important. I'd also like to congratulate the residents of the city of Villa Park, once again, we had the highest voter turnout of any city in Orange County, perhaps in the state, at sixty-one point seven percent. Many cities don't even hit fifty percent, so, there was a time when we were closer to seventy, seventy-five percent, we had a lot of good hot button issues that draw, drew people out, but it's so important for us to turn out and vote. Because we turn out in such high numbers, we can affect the outcome of, of important issues in the county and the region. And I would like to also report on the votes with regard to Measure K, just specifically to the city of Villa Park, because I pulled that data. In the city of Villa Park, the voters, one thousand sixty-nine of them voted yes, one thousand four hundred and forty-seven of them voted no, so the city of Villa Park rejected Measure K to the tune of just over fifty-seven point five percent, and I thought that was an important piece, a data point for your benefit and for the benefit of the residents of the city of Villa Park.
Thank you, that was interesting. Anyone else, no other reports? I don't, I don't have any, well, unless I have to report on the FIRE authority, so I'll just be safe rather than sorry. I attended a special meeting of the FIRE authority last, I think it was last Thursday, and we elected a new fire chief. And although I continue my frustration with the pension scenario and the horrid underfunding